Order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adopt the agenda. If you can all please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item two is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are approved all at once and are one meeting approval items. So 2A is approval of personnel recommendations. Item 2B is approval by the Board of the annual declaration and parent notice of the district's student academic standards that will be in effect for the 2017-18 school year pursuant to section 120.1213 and section 118.301GA1 of the state statutes. Item 2C is approval of DPI pupil nondiscrimination report. Would anyone like to remove an item?
I'd like to remove A.
Okay. Anyone like to remove anything else? Okay, so a motion to approve items 2B and 2C.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. John, go ahead with 2A.
Okay, it's just a, it's just a little formality thing. I think it's important to recognize all the years that the staff that are resigning have given us. I know, leading the pack there, that I, to my knowledge, is Lynn Koharski from fifth grade. She's moving on, so I just wanted to thank the staff for all the work they've done. And I, and I mean, that's, that's just it. I wanted to highlight, highlight that.
Okay, so then do we have a motion? Any other questions or comments? Okay, so take a motion to approve item 2A.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I would like to introduce, if you noticed on the agenda, that we have a new hire who happens to be with us tonight. So this is Chris Sapersky, who is our new middle school assistant principal. He's coming to us from a neighboring district. And he brought his cheering section with him, his three daughters. I met them last Friday night at the Middle School Musical also, so I'd like to welcome Chris to the district and introduce you to him.
So he brought his kids so we couldn't pick on him?
Listen, he's not going.
Nice move.
So I just wanted to introduce him as he was in the audience too, so. Welcome.
Congratulations and welcome, thank you. Item three is discussion. 3A is personalized learning spaces construction projects. It'll be Dr. Olson and Mike.
All right, so the last, just for some background, the Board has received memos the last couple of days just about more of the historical background of this piece as far as the spaces that have been renovated over the last two years. This would be year number three or round three, or whoever else you want to think about it, to get our spaces more aligned with the personalized learning that is the emphasis for Whitwell. So really, the piece here as far as the dollar amounts go, which is the part that I'm interested in, we have a, we have a couple of different options here. So first of all, you see the totals that we're looking at down here at Edgerton, HCE, and W, and the middle school. Really, the total construction that we want to do, which really is the knocking down of walls, electrical, Todd can speak more to it as well. We're looking at approximately $175,000 in that piece for all three of those construction aspects. We did get detailed quotes this afternoon, and so we'll have those either to the Board as far as a memo and in the Board packet for the 12th, when you look at it the second time, how that breaks down. We don't have anything yet for the middle school, is that correct? Yep, so we'll either work on that or see how close we can get to getting a more detailed quote on that. But the construction is approximately 175. The technology in the furniture piece is more looking at the historical, the last two years, as far as what has been purchased for new spaces. We think the technology piece there, that involves mostly new computers in these areas to facilitate these spaces. We think that's a very conservative estimate right now for that dollar amount. We have some plans as far as what could be done technology-wise to bring that cost down. And then we also allocated $30,000 for furniture, which is in line with what has been spent the last two years to outfit those spaces. I know the Board, you did a tour of this back, I think in the, while I was here, so the fall or the winter of some of the
December.
personalized spaces that you saw at Edgerton. And so that, that cool look of, you know, that personalized space and those furnishings, those, that, that's what the idea is with this dollar amount here. So right now, as far as funding this, we have a couple of different options, which was kind of laid out in the memo, and this is just really important to kind of understand as we bring about the preliminary budget and through budgeting season. Number one is we, or option one, no particular order, I guess, but just a first option would be, we are discussing of what to do next with our technology needs, what best is aligned for our students. And right now, in the preliminary budget, there's a budget line item in technology that goes towards what we have been doing, which is purchasing all new iPads for three different grade levels. As we kind of recall from some past discussions, we're not sure if that's the direction that the district wants to continue to go in. If it's not the direction, or we are unsure of that direction, then it makes a lot of sense to not go through with that such a large line item purchase if we're going to be going in a different technology direction this year, next year, whatever the case may be. And so we would use those funds for one year to offset the cost of this construction in Fund 10. And there's enough room there to be able to do that one-to-one swap of technology for construction. Is everyone with me so far? So that would be option one.
So, so would we, someone get, would we just use the equipment that we currently have and not purchase any?
So we would use the equipment that we currently have. So our 12th graders, for example, with their iPads, what we could do to bring down that $65,000 cost, we could bring those 12th grade iPads, bring them into the elementary schools instead of purchasing all new iPad.
And that swap any out?
Correct.
Wouldn't they have to go to the, I mean, we're not changing number of grades in the district, so.
We would purchase that sixth grade.
So we would purchase one grade level, which would be at the sixth grade.
Why would we purchase any? Because that, to me, seems if we're about to, if we're talking about going to a different technology, why would we spend tens of thousands of dollars?
Based on the age of that specific one, because, because of the ages of the 12th grade ones, my understanding, and I have Chris and Jack here who can pop in at any time here, but in terms of the planning that we were talking about, their sixth grade would be the only new one that we would purchase, so feel free to.
Sixth grade is going on would be four years old. So the current sixth grade ones, we'll move up with them, but the 12th grade ones are three years old or due for replacement, but we can get another year of them. So we're moving those down to the elementary grade. Fulfill the needs that they had in there.
So, so I'm.
The sixth grader, the fifth grader that are coming into sixth grade, you're not having, and they would follow down six, seven, and eighth grade.
John's question, I think, is if we're considering changing, why would we buy new iPads for a full grade level? With the thought that if we pay for new ones this year, we would have no use for them a year later. Am I, is that correct?
That's partially correct. So to be more complete, I appreciate it, but to be more complete, it sounds like you're talking about adding to the total number or not? If you're talking about tech replay, tech refresh?
To the elementary schools.
Okay, so if you're talking about tech refresh, I see no need to pursue tech refresh if we might, if we might, you know, in exchanging old iPads for new, if we're considering going away from iPad minis. And as far as adding them to the fifth grade, again, we're talking about injecting a technology that we might be going away from for tens of thousands of dollars to fifth grade. And I think that fifth grade has been getting by for years without one-to-one iPads for students, or is it, are we talking just 50 iPads or whatever? But either way, it's a significant value. I mean, as I looked at it, the previous, I think it was a historical document provided 50 iPad minis and 50 Otter boxes, totaled about 14.5 or something like that. I mean, you know, we're talking about, you know, and I don't know how many you're talking about getting for fifth grade.
Six.
For the sixth grade, it'd be about 200.
Okay, but that's so that you can give the, give some to the fifth grade, right? Okay, so we're adding 200 iPad minis. The proposal is to add 200 iPad minis to the district, which to me sounds like about $58,000 if my public math is close. I can't, I don't remember seeing the numbers here, but.
Right off, yeah.
But, so I don't understand why we spend $58,000 to get a technology, to add to a technology base that we're talking about moving away from potentially. And up till now, they haven't had one-to-one iPads in fifth grade. I don't understand why we invest in that for this next year if we're going to go away from it. I would completely not support $60,000.
Fifth grade, are you giving them to the sixth grade?
Well, it's semantics at this point because they're talking about moving them from grade to grade and adding 200 so that they can do one-to-one in fifth grade, is what I understand.
No, no. Sixth grade.
No, they need more in both elementary schools, not just for fifth grade.
Right.
They need more technology in both elementary schools. Because we're short now.
And I'm not, I don't, I'm not the one that keeps talking about sixth grade. I'm talking about fifth grade.
And we're saying you're, you're wrong with the fifth grade.
It's not fifth grade.
They're not doing one-to-one fifth grade, and that's what we're trying to expose.
But they're adding, they're adding numbers to the fifth grade overall.
No.
No.
So where are they adding the numbers?
Grades K through five. We're spreading the 200 senior laptops, iPads out to, so let's just say 100 iPad minis that the seniors have.
So it doesn't matter to me what year, what year they come from, whether it's the seniors to give them to the elementary schools, and then we buy for the sixth grade, and it's all, it's all our total population. So I'm talking about, I have a problem with spending $60,000 on 200 iPads. We may be going away from that to begin with.
If I'm understanding correctly, we're going to have to buy new technology one way or the other this year.
So part, so part of the, well, part of the dilemma has to do, part of it has to do with, if we were on a hiatus for one year, the tech refresh cycle, if you will. Now, if we put a hiatus on this, and don't, so we have three grade levels of high through nine, 10, 11, and if we don't do it at sixth grade, we would have now four grade levels of computers that would be up for replacement because we're extending them by one year. And when you look at a cycle of replacement, if you have, if you don't equally spread out in terms of a recycle placement, all of a sudden, one year has a much larger purchase than the other. So part of that has to do with, so you have seven grades, if you will, to spread over three years of a replacement cycle. If four of those grades now are due in one year, you haven't balanced the fiscal implication of the refresh cycle of it.
But the only thing that says replace it three years, and then if you extend it four years, it kind of one year over, is the common concept that you replace it three years. You don't have to replace it three years. So, so you wouldn't have to necessarily replace those four grades at one time. So I think it's a mistake to spend $60,000 to perpetuate a technology that we may be going away from. I think your, what you just said is a good argument to press forward on deciding what direction we're going to go on technology sooner rather than later, so that we can buy sooner rather than later the desired technology that we're going to try to maintain going forward.
So let me ask, if we move away from iPad as the preferred across the Board, would there still be uses in the district for the 200 new iPads we use?
Yes.
Repurchase.
I believe there was a conversation with principals that the iPads would stay K5. And I'm one of the last couple of games.
Okay, so if we, I agree. So if we bought 200 new iPads, it wouldn't be a waste of money that would be utilized.
They'd be purpose in the elementary hall.
Okay.
I think that was, that was our plan for looking at what devices are used at various levels, elementaries with apps, kindergartners in terms of a tablet device as compared to a complete laptop. And so I think, I think we heard through our personalizing learning conversations, the need, so not just fifth grade, but basically K5, not having, I mean, I don't know what the ratio is, maybe Chris can answer that in terms of devices that are elementary, but it's eight per, eight per.
What I've seen, and Chris might be able to, Chris gave crystal, might be able, and Lori, what I've seen when I've been in the elementary schools is they have four or five per classroom. And they.
They're saying eight.
We have eight, so eight iPads per classroom and then the two personalized learning environments because that was done after that time. They have a combination of iPads and then MacBook.
So. Go ahead.
I fully support the direction you're going in. We don't have that figured out for the future. And we're going to need devices for the middle school. From all of our experience that we've heard on the reports on this board and even in my circles, those middle school iPads work very well for the kids. So I haven't heard complaints about those. I do see the need, though, to look in the future at the different, the tablets that are out there and the Google. Some of those devices are great, so I understand where we're going, but for this year, it's June. We really need to move for those kids coming up next year. So I want to disagree with my colleague over there. I think we do need to invest that money. It's never going to be a waste. I mean, I see what kids are doing on technology, and you've got to have it accessible to them so that they can access the information in a timely manner. Even these guys could probably tell us that they use technology to look things up and to research and spelling and writing, all of those things. So whether or not this is the best techn, I mean, technology's always going to be changing too. I mean, we may say, I think there's always going to be something we could be doing better as it changes as well, so hard to get comfortable with buying stuff today we may not need next year or in two years. But that's the way it is. So, I mean, just to provide another perspective, I want to say that I fully support what you're doing. I think you'll figure out the best way, working with administrators, to come up with the dollars that make the most sense. I've also always appreciated the refresh process because it was really based on two things. The timeliness of getting the best bang for your buck, and gosh, this thing's only like four years old and it's not working right anymore. I mean, it's, I mean, I know from personal experience, they just have to be updated if you use it a lot. So I'm totally in support of what you're doing. I also just want to bring it back to the whole personalized learning discussion because I'm very thrilled, again, to see our ability to create an environment that meets the needs of each child where they're at, and that this kind of investment in these classrooms is, is, you know, shows again our commitment, our Board's commitment, to making sure that we are creating the best environment for our kids. I appreciate the plans that you guys are bringing forward. As our tour showed us last year, there were lots of exciting ideas for the fifth grade level. So it looks good to me, and I appreciate, I'll look forward to seeing the bids, though, to, you know, watch that dollar.
So to continue on this, what I was, I see no problems with moving iPad minis down to the elementary school. I have heard problems from kids at the middle school, but I've heard more problems from kids doing heavier lifting, so to speak, at the high school. So I think it's most imperative to probably start replacing at the high school first. If we do that sooner rather than later, we can move the iPad minis that, that we, we can start moving iPad minis that we have down to the elementary school and not have to spend any money on those. In the, in the meantime, just for example, five machines at Target in New Berlin of different types of laptops, whether it was, I think there was, might have been four, four-piece, four Windows-based and one Chromebook were $300 or less, which comes in essentially at the price we've seen before for iPad minis plus Otter boxes. So I don't see why it's not possible to decide on at least, even if it's temporary. Temporary, you said you don't see anything would be a waste. Well, temporary is still useful. At least a temporary technology solution that would be more functional than the iPad out of the gate for what I hear from college students and some of the, from high school students and some of the teachers, to get something like that up at the high school and, and roll the iPad minis down to the, to the elementary school. I think that if we started doing that now, it would not be too soon.
When do you plan on bringing a plan to us?
For the devices?
Yes.
Yeah, so part of it is in, part of this is this fiscation, trying to plan it, and I think, talking with folks, our, our various teams in building things, I don't, we do have to look at something different. One of the challenges is at the high school, we've had pretty, our staff is highly concerned about the change of platform. I'm not going to speak, I'm not going to point out it. They're very concerned about the change of platform in a short amount of time. As a high school specifically, there are many courses which have mixed grades in them, nine through 12. And so any implementation of which you're phasing in devices, so a kid comes with an iPad and another kid comes with an HP laptop, let's just do that. And I'm the teacher now trying to say that. And now that becomes that much more challenging for me in addition to trying to learn that and then whatever device I have. So there was some, I would say, high anxiety in terms of the staff about, we are already, especially at our, you know, our high school has some changes, not as significant as our K8 folks, but fiscally, the, the piece of it would be to do all four grades at once in order to be able to say, I'm a teacher and now I don't have mixed devices. Tech support isn't trying to say, do you have an iPad, you have this? Okay, if you're on an iPad, this is the thing, you know, all of the things that go around with that. We had just received, I think, you know, information from more districts. A neighboring district has just implemented for the first time an interesting concept. We'd like to explore it, which families sort of, and it's theirs at the end of it. It's theirs to purchase at the end of it. We thought that was a very interesting way of approaching it because of the insurance cost. There are some infrastructure things that we, we need to do, the ability for the Apple devices to be locked down or some of the, it's a very different approach that we have to do that in terms of some of the things that we would provide, what we call safeguards and securities. It's different when you change platforms in terms of that. So the way that we can lock down apps and things on that would have to be changed. So in order for us to do that at all, all of those grades, and a lot of anxiety by staff right now in terms of that and being able to support multiple platforms without having a lot of pieces in that. I think that there is some agreement that we need to switch device and get to that. I think the timing right now amidst everything else for our staff, I'm trying to be very cognizant of that and aware of that because there is some level of change going on with them. And different staff adapt differently to what that is. And while some people might be much more comfortable saying it doesn't matter the platform, it's still, you know, Google's Google, it doesn't matter where you're doing it on, for some people that causes another level to go through. So I think in terms of that answer, Quinn, I think by us holding off a year to do anything there and, and the fiscal implications of what it is, so the following year, we could at the high school sort of do a massive purchase because it becomes very challenging to support in a classroom.
Well, we realized that, we found that out when we rolled out the iPads, that we were two years, two years short and we had a progressive plan. Okay, so you don't have any idea?
Well, I think.
Are you working on it?
Absolutely, we're working on it. We're continuing collecting it. I think that latest proposal we got from a nearby district was very intriguing. I think the time crunch of where we are in getting devices here and not making a, I don't want to make a rushed decision, and this is me, I get it, I sort of have a pace exchange that is, so for me to say this, understand that that's, that's a pretty big deal, and you can ask anybody sitting back there for me to say we need to slow down on something. So understand that that's very intentional because I, I think that there is a point at which it, it might be too much, and so.
And what does the next tech plan do?
It's no longer required. It hasn't been required. After the last time this Board approved it, two months later DPI no longer requires it. Doesn't mean that your local district should not have a guiding document and a roadmap along with it. I think it should coexist with our personalizing learning plan. I think that they should sort of tailor each other in terms of that. So we are working on it now, and I would say that the fall would be the decision that we make on it so we can start to plan and get some devices here to have teachers start to decide what, so they can transfer what it is that they're doing in their classrooms and know what that is so we aren't waiting till next spring to do that. So I think that that transition will be there. We've also decided to sort of pause on refreshing teacher laptops because they're MacBooks, and that would not make sense to do that because you'd want the teachers to have the same type of device that's there. So we're taking some steps that are just sort of putting a pause on it, which in essence temporarily frees up some dollars for what that might be. So that's really in terms of this proposal by saying, while this isn't a technology proposal, that's one potential way of doing it because it's a one-year project this year. Think, you know, should we go to referendum and take care of some of the facility needs then? But if we don't, that's going to be something we're going to have to talk about in terms of priority. But that was one of the proposals that, that in terms of what Mike is presenting, why we might be able to do it.
Will students have input into the.
Absolutely, and that's why we felt at this time of the year when we sat down with the IT staff, we could give a quick survey out there, but we really feel, and we've heard from it, you know, I've gone through the, you know, John's not wrong, that is a common theme between parents and students, definitely. I think staff, well, I think would adjust to it. There are some who I was surprised to at one point were more, and actually have said would, would be quite, you know, concerned if we made a switch because they've sort of developed things, you know, and would need a little bit more lead time, if you will. So I would like to create some focus groups and, and do that a little bit more widespread rather than just quickly make that. So there will be a change without a doubt, but I think that in terms of what infrastructure needs to have, there's insurance plans, that becomes different as compared to an iPad. The breakage on, on this, having come from, and everybody will tell you, this is the part that breaks on every laptop. When you have an iPad, you don't have that. And so the insurance, does the district provide that? Do parents provide that? I mean, those are some decisions that we have to decide to what expenses there are. And I don't want the Board to feel rushed that we have to make this and all of a sudden parents come back to registration over the summer and we're adding a $50 insurance fee because that's the way that, you know. So it, the, the timing in terms of all that, I want to make sure that it's a well-thought-out decision. Otherwise, we're going to be taking a lot of questions very rapidly from parents in the community that, that maybe we haven't put enough time into thinking it all the way through.
So I'm concerned about using, conserving tech refresh dollars. I'm concerned about using those elsewhere, whether it's to go up on the number of electronics in the elementary schools, or it's to pay for the Plex modifications in the schools. All that essentially is kicking the can down the road because if we do, you know, change over, change platforms at the high school and you want to do it all at once, which I understand the reasoning for that, makes sense to me. And I also understand, you know, the taking a little bit of time to pick the right platform, for sure. I, I think that, well, you know my feelings on how they launched it the first time, so, and here we are. But unless we save money by not tech refreshing and not adding to the numbers where things have been getting by, I guess, one way or another as it is, I think that money needs to be saved and rolled towards the four-year purchase.
Well, and that's the option too, really, so I think that's, yep.
Or, or a reasonable plan to come up with that money later if, because, I mean, I understood the, the point of, of using, of conserving tech refresh doll, of, of converting tech refresh dollars to Plex construction. I mean, I, I understood that. The only problem is that we still look at, because I don't believe, as I've already said, in spending any money on tech refresh when we may not be staying with that platform. So, you know, unless there's a plausible way of getting that money for a four-year purchase of what I think isn't going to be any more expensive than an iPad mini and, and an Otter Box down the road, then we, we have to.
Sure, so.
Be more responsible how we spend the tech dollars.
Yeah, so when we look ahead and how that could possibly, well, John, what we would say is, is this, is this would, there's some faith in the process that we're going to go into with the referendum. There is some faith that that's going to happen. And what that would entail would mean not spending on any more knocking down walls and things at HCE and EES. There's also looking ahead at, no matter, now that there's an assembly plan out for the biennium and there's still the Governor's proposal out, and the good thing is, at least on both plans, next year in 1819, there's 200 additional dollars per student. So revenue is looking to be up $200 per student on top of whatever we would get here in 1718. You do have, we do have quite a bit retirement costs falling off after this next year as well related to those plans. So when we start to look at 1819, 1819 is a much more freer year. So we start to take a look at where do we start to draw some dollars from to do a four-year tech plan. I don't disagree that we could certainly hold those dollars aside this year for tech. Essentially, what that would look like is budgeting a surplus, having the Board next May or June commit fund balance, because that would roll, surplus would just roll into fund balance. The Board wouldn't take a formal action to commit some of their fund balance to the purchase of technology equipment. So we would just roll what we normally would spend, plus some fund balance that the Board has set, and we will do this. What that does then is obviously then for this year, you can't fit this then into Fund 10. And then the Board have to start looking at, then, is this is still a priority. This is something that we want to prioritize out of Fund 41. And delete that fund balance instead. So that would be the option. And, and distribute that fund balance instead. So that would be the options right now. I'm not quite understanding yet that the biennium is not finished. $200, we could fit all of this in. I do want to, so, so those are the options that are out there if you want to roll tech dollars forward. I do want to emphasize, and Lynn, you can close yours on this, we don't have the funds for the middle school at this point.
She's no longer at the middle school. Urs went there.
Her way, P love. Publicly apologize to Laura.
Right, okay. So that, that 50, what, what we're estimating to be about $50,000. We're currently budgeting in the preliminary budget for next Tuesday is 150 per student. If, if the state budget would come in at anything above 175, you know, above 200, now all of a sudden you're fitting this entire project in with the help of still the technology side of things. But it would certainly relieve a lot of pressure if we had $200 and would not touch Fund 41 at all. So part of this proposal is, is understanding where those dollars can be drawn from to make this happen if it is a priority. And this is actually really helpful discussion right now about kind of the direction to go. So I, I guess from my standpoint, John and everybody else is, is there a priority then to, I, I feel like we could use tech dollars and that not touching then buildings and grounds and having some of this money that would already be able to come out of Fund 10 anyway. Not touching buildings and grounds in 1819 as far as knocking down, down walls and all those pieces that we have in the last three years would not happen or simply could not happen. And those dollars would have to be used for tech to be making a trade-off in 1819. But I do see a quote-unquote freer budget in 1819.
But what I, what I'm afraid is going to happen or could, one option that could happen is that we start committing some 1819 dollars that you talk about being freed up towards reducing a proposed referendum, reducing the, the price tag on a proposed referendum or something like that. So again, it's, it's kind of moving stuff around and, and it-
Yep.
I, I don't know. I, I still think that if we, if we've gotten by till now without additional iPad minis in the, in the elementary school, there's $60,000 that we can conserve for, for getting the proper tech, for example. And as far as-
Right. So in the, in the preliminary budget, what that would mean is, so right now, the total tech, you'll see it in the, in the budget. So the total tech line item for refresh is about 170. We're dropping that down to like you said, the 60, right? So that additional 60, if we wanted to do anything, yes, it could go towards some of this. Now, I want to be clear, just, the, the $65,000 in technology that is in this plan, that's on top of the 60 that's in the preliminary budget, right? So this isn't, this isn't iPad minis. This isn't, this is, what's in this proposal for 65,000, that is on top of the $60,000 for the sixth grade right now, for next year's sixth grade. Is everyone clear on, on what I'm saying?
So we can plus up the numbers in, uh-
Yes.
Yes. So you're saying that we would save 125,000 if we didn't plus up the numbers at the elementary school and we didn't do tech refresh in the, but then you said something about 170,000.
Yep. So right now, what's in our preliminary budget is a, was a 170. That was to replace three grade levels of iPads with the refresh program, okay? So now what the, what we could say is we're no longer going to spend that 170. We're only going to do the sixth grade, okay? So that's, that was 110,000. It was going to come out of that tech refresh and go towards supplementing these pieces right here.
The construction stuff.
The construction stuff. But this 65,000 is on top of what was already being budgeted in the refresh program. It was new, really new laptops, Chris and Lori, I don't know if you want to speak to any of this, but new laptops really at the fifth grade level. Because that's kind of what had been done the last two years, which was 50 new laptops, 25 and 25 at each school. So, so I just want to be clear that that is, this is an additional 65 in the, in the budget. Is everyone?
An additional 65 on top of the 170?
Well, no, an additional 65 on top of the 60.
60?
Yes, on top of the 60.
So we're still under the total 170 that we had budgeted?
We're using, yep, correct. So the 170 is being dropped down to 60. I'm using that 110 to go into this proposal to cover the entire cost. However, it doesn't, it still doesn't cover the middle school.
Do you still plan on spending 65 on more laptops at the elementary?
Yes. So I don't think it will be 65. I think it will be much less than that, especially if you're rolling down iPads.
And is that MacBooks?
Different. It doesn't have to be, as we've talked about the principles, it does not have to be MacBooks. It is technology needs. So this is there. It's a conservative number. It's what's been there the last two years with the purchase of 50 MacBooks and iPad minis. So that number is conservative.
I'd be interested in what it would go for because again, I think spending new money on new devices that we're trying to go away, that we may be trying to go away from is not the best plan. I think we need to decide what we're going to, what platform we're going to go with before we spend more mass, before we do more mass purchases on multiple pieces of equipment. So we could save more than 170.
Any other questions?
Yeah. And we are in cahoots with our architect about these spaces and that's not going to, we're building them this year and knock them down next year?
Correct.
Because it'd be part of what they may do in terms of the redo. We were very intentional about that to make sure that it was not money that would have like not been part of what that looks like. We ran it by them.
Can we get a little bit more explanation on the middle school diagram? I realize that Matt wasn't able to, to tidy this up. But I mean, I, I guess that kind of leaves me wondering what, what it means.
So really, it is on the first handout there, which is the 200 level. So actually on the second floor, we'd be looking to knock out two walls between 200, first one between 204 and 206.
I suppose we can pull the diagram up on the screen.
So between 204 and 206 and 212 and 214, knocking down those walls, not, not full walls, just to have better flow between those two rooms because they are co-teaching rooms. They're going to have over, Lynn, is it over 60 students kind of flowing between those spaces ideally? So it doesn't have to be the full walls being, being knocked out, but a little over half the wall, trying to avoid as much electrical as possible in that process. And then I'm, yeah, and then on the first floor.
Well, still on that floor, why, can you scroll it down a little bit so you can see the, there you go. So why are those areas colored in and marked?
Oh.
FLS, SE, blue and orange.
That was just a color code of how we were going to cluster grade levels.
Okay. Has nothing to do with construction project? Okay, good. I'm good, I'm good. And then as the, as far as the Makerspace markings there, is that going to require anything on 254, 252? Keep going. Bottom left there.
No.
What, what's being done there? Any-
That's the old Paxton Patterson lab. So that's an ideal space for a Makerspace because a lot of the, the infrastructure is already there as far as outlets and breakout spaces.
Okay.
So it's, it's not, it's already ready to go. We just have to put stuff in it, but the, the space itself is good.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. And then on the, on the first floor, it's just that X again with Lynn's beautiful coloring, but it is 108 and between 108 and 110, we would knock out that wall again for the co-teaching flow to be there. So right now, the, the budget calls for that around 50,000. We think, again, we think that's conservative as well, but that we're still getting a quote on also. So what we're trying to do here is just get this discussion out there. And like I said, we do have some detailed quotes for EES and HCE, which I can provide you even tonight or tomorrow morning to see how that breaks down with, with what we've budgeted. But then again, with the middle school, that's a piece that again would probably have to come out of, at this time would have to come out of Fund 41 if it's considered a priority unless the budget comes in above 175 dollars per pupil.
So we can't, if we spend it here, we can't spend it on the technology thing. You were potentially, you weren't necessarily mentioning to spend on the technology, but just the overall balance. What is the Fund 41 balance?
Right now it is 900,000.
And can you please send us the detailed breakout?
Breakouts, yes.
Thank you very much.
Todd, did you, you did a walk around with Cullen on Friday?
I did.
Okay.
We did go into the middle school. They just had not had enough time-
Yep.
To provide us with, I mean, it's like a number you had put in the middle school.
Yeah. So a quick look at that breakout, put a, put in there, electrical, the actual construction, how else they break that out.
So it would be electrical demolition, redoing electrical removal of the wall and attaching ECT tile.
That's right.
It was going to be a perfect file or was it just going to be like attaching to the wall?
And then paint's not needed?
Paint's always needed.
No, it's not.
Jesus Christ.
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay.
Right, sister?
Yeah.
All right.
Little painters in the room, please stand there. Okay, so any other questions? Thanks, Todd.
Just a really quick one. Mike, do you have a preference on which option?
Yeah, I prefer the one that gives you the most flexibility, which would be, which would be using. For now, I, I would prefer to use the tech line budget to cover it out of Fund 10 costs because I don't see this happening again next year. Whether referendum goes or not, I don't, I don't think there's any other construction to really do with HCE and EES. And thus, this line item might disappear regardless and then those dollars can be used towards tech. I think both, like I said, both bienniums bring, bring out that $200 in year two with some costs falling off. I feel like we're, we'd be in a better place in 1819 anyway that we can handle some moving of allocations this year or for 1718. So that would be my preference.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, thank you. So item 3B is Act 32.
So this is the first time you're looking at, this is the, this, this proposal is directly related to taking the 1.625 million that we had spent on energy efficiency projects and moving 325,000 of that work into the 1718 school year. Again, the obligations don't change. It would be an amendment to the contract with Train in which they would say, we're no longer doing 1.625. We're doing 1.3 and then taking that 325,000 and doing it post-July 1 and thus giving us some flexibility in being able to stabilize the mill rate in 1718 with those dollars. So the, the contracts which I do have and I can-
They're in the folder.
Thank you.
They are, all of them.
Thank you.
They're all in the folder.
Thank you. So they're in the folder, yes.
And it does add lighting on to, lighting and some plumbing, right?
It is lighting and plumbing. Well, it's, it's, those were what was in the original 1.625. It's simply saying, we're not doing the lighting and plumbing until after July 1.
I, I didn't see them listed in the original. I guess Amendment 1, it wasn't listed in, but that's because it was probably removed from the original.
It was taken out, yes.
Okay, so, and it's in Amendment 2, which is probably, it was already in the original. All right.
Yes. Yep. So they just amended those scopes. Yep.
And didn't Matt say that lighting will pay for itself in like 10 years?
The lighting is a-
Eight, eight to 10, I think.
Is the shortest payback.
Yes. It'd be interesting to, I'm very curious to see if that LED stuff, the commercial grade LED stuff really does last like it's supposed to because I can tell you that the residential LED stuff does not.
Okay. So this is, this is a net zero. This is our obligation. This is helping us, helping us out. So, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We'll build on this at the next meeting, huh?
Yes.
Yep, this will all be next Monday. Okay, thank you. Item 3C is the student handbooks.
As is customary, the, the board looks at changes that are being made in the student handbooks. You can see each principal has given a bulleted list. The majority of them are what we call technical changes. There's lunch prices or names or dates or those types of things. What will happen after the Neola board policies get updated, you notice, for example, at the high school and we're trying to encourage as many handbooks that relate to a board policy, link directly to that board policy because that way when the board policy updates, so does the handbook automatically instead of trying to keep changing it in multiple places. So there will be over the summer, once board, the, the board approves the Neola policies, there will be updated links to those within the handbooks. But again, those are technical changes as compared to substantive changes that you're seeing here. So if there are any questions to any of the bulleted lists, each of the principals provided them and the handbooks were provided to you so you could see what that looked like in there. I guess we would entertain questions, but then on Monday, again, there would be a formal action to approve those.
So I appreciate the bulleted list. It's nice to see it summarized like that, but I would also like to see a redline change like there is in the, which one was it? I've got so many open.
HCE.
Like the staff one.
The HCE one also.
HCE one's also redlined?
Yeah. So one of the, yeah. One of the challenges is that the high school one is actually a, a website and so you can't really redline a website.
My link didn't work for that. Yeah, I see the ones on HCE. I pulled up something else earlier, but Edgerton is not. Anyway, my request is just to see redlined stuff so I can see the bulleted stuff and go through it and see what was, how it was changed.
Yeah. The other part of it is if they're done in Google Docs, I know you're not going to want to hear this, but there isn't such a feature as redline. It's a Microsoft Word feature and so.
So you can do it when you download it to your computer, change it on your computer and then put it back on Google Docs.
That's assuming that the, people don't all have Microsoft Word in the district. I mean, as a, I'm just like, that, that's not a software that everybody has access to, but yes.
It's not on MacBooks?
Not, no, because it's, it's a per, Chris isn't paying, I will call. No, it's not. Teachers do not have any.
Teachers do not have.
No.
Well, I mean, it's not the teachers that are doing the handbook.
No. And I don't know if all supports, I don't know to what level. It's not, not everybody has it, but.
In any case, however it may be and whatever our limitations are, if we can overcome those limitations and provide redline changes to documents and handbooks, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we'll work on that.
We're, we're actually trying to move towards electronic and-
Yeah, it wouldn't have-
You know, and move away from a PDF version and more towards something more interactive.
The problem is, it makes it harder to look at it and see, it makes it very nice for the person putting out, assuming it gets approved, to update and maintain, but I mean, some other walk of life I did for 28 years, it also, almost 29, it also meant that when they went electronic on everything, that people knew their stuff a lot less because the changes coming through did not need to process through somebody's mind to make any paper changes. It just, they just updated a flash drive and it was done. And then suddenly people didn't know their books, or in this case, policies, regulations near you as well. But in any case, it does help to see redline stuff.
So any other questions about the student handbooks? Okay. So item 4, action items. So 4A is certified staff contracts and wages.
Let me take it. Yeah. So Personnel Committee met twice with the WAFT. Yesterday, they had a meeting to bring the latest proposal to their membership and we were informed last night that the vote passed in terms of that, their, their ratification of the offer. And so the next step in the process is for the board to approve it, to have a, an agreement to move forward with. So.
Okay.
What you're seeing in front of it is what was discussed before in terms of what that was and at the Personnel Committee, so.
So motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And item 4B is support staff wages. So do you have a motion to approve this?
Wait, are those, there's two proposals. I think we have to, they're two 4As. Yeah. So there's, yeah, they were two 4As actually. There's two proposals. Yeah. Yep. So there, just, so the second, there's a second proposal under 4A if you look at that, if you're, if you're, I don't know if you're bookmarking or whatever, but it's on page 35 of 36. So as you know, you, we can only negotiate up to the CPI, which was the proposal that the board just approved. The board will be giving additional percentage beyond that for a total of 1.5, but that additional percentage can't be negotiated. So it's a separate proposal that we have to see on here. And so that information is here that the board actually has to approve that additional point, 24. Did I do my math right? Okay. And that's what this proposal is separately because it can't be part of a negotiated agreement. So this proposal is to do that, to be able to distribute a, a total of a 1.5% across in terms of that. So that's why it's a separate motion in terms of that.
I move, we approve the second part of 4A.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's approved. Thank you. Note 4B.
Yep. So just like every other- Yep, so just like, uh, every other, all employee groups so far, uh, we'd be looking to also increase, um, the hourly base wage of our support staff by the 1.5% as well as we've seen with, with, um, the other employee groups.
Okay.
Question?
So, motion to approve?
Come on.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, 5 is comments from the school board regarding items for future consideration. Reminder, no discussion or action will be taken at this time. And do we have any topics that I can discuss in the future?
I do. Uh, I'd like the administration to check on the feasibility of having the high school graduation at Falcon Field. I think a, uh, a good resource would be our, uh, Forward Thinking Greendale, which does it. And I also like, uh, a report, something about this, uh, atrium that money has been given to or hasn't been given to, and we got plans for, we don't have plans. What's the deal?
So, like the last three years or something?
Can't discuss it.
We'll just ask.
Yeah, it, we've, those are on the list already, so.
They're on the list already? Wow.
After, after Sunday they are, yes.
Oh, I thought this is where we did that.
Remember she was fat.
No, they're not, I, I'm not, it's not my list.
Beautiful, great.
Anybody else? Any other items?
Um, I, I would like to, um, I guess I don't know how to, uh, frame it, but, um, security and student accountability at the high school. Or, uh, not so much just student, but basically, students can't, um, sign in and sign out en masse because we don't have the technology to be able to do that for like open campus stuff. So, um, looking at, I wonder if we could discuss at some point, looking at a change in the technology for whether it would be badging or whatever and, and swipe cards kind of thing for, for signing in, signing out. By the way, that would be cheap and easy.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everybody have a great night, thank you.
There's a problem. It's still light out. Are you aware of that?